Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll ask for Pastor Fair if you're in the audience, lead us in our prayer. And right from the prayer, we'll go right into the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. God, we do thank you so much for today and the blessings of life that you've given us. God, we thank you for this time that you've called us here tonight. God, I now ask that you give a special blessing to these that have taken office now and will begin the business of the city of Northport. God, I pray for their leadership and God, just the wisdom that'll be coming from you, God, that you grant them discernment and vision for the future. God, now bless us all as we attend this meeting and God, travel home tonight. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan, call roll, please.
Councilman Hambride?
Here.
Councilman Logan?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Hogg?
Here.
Web forum, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Donna Ehren has a presentation to present regarding our public safety. And after that, Mayor, if you would, stay down at your post, I can, we have another presentation directly after that one.
Since 1976, the citizens of Northport have honored individuals that have gone the extra mile, contributing their time, energies, talents, and resources to build a quality, growing community. We recognized an individual as the Northport Citizen of the Year and in five other categories, one of which is the Northport Public Safety Leader of the Year. Every day, dedicated public safety professionals work tirelessly to ensure that Northport is a safe place to live, work, and enjoy life. Men and women who serve in law enforcement and with our fire and emergency departments are often taken for granted, but these dedicated servants are always there when there is a need. Therefore, it is our privilege to honor one individual who reflects the services and commitment to all public safety professionals with the 2016 Northport Public Safety Leader Award. Our 2016 honorary serves as a firefighter and paramedic with the Northport Fire and Rescue, routinely receiving positive feedback from citizens for going above and beyond the call of duty in his job performance. Our recipient exhibits a strong work ethic and a passion for the community. He is fluent in three languages and serves as a translator for many local and state agencies, including the Northport Fire Police Department and the Tuscaloosa County Sheriff's Department. Our honoree's latest endeavor is trained to be the first firefighter combat challenge participant for the Northport Fire and Rescue. This demanding five-event physical challenge brings together the best of the best to determine the fittest of the firefighters. Our recipient's dedication, dependability, and integrity make him an exemplary representative of the city of Northport. Please join me as we honor the 2016 Northport Public Safety Leadership Award winner, Mr. Manuel Jimenez.
Sure, please. I just want to say to everybody, thank you for coming out tonight. I don't know if you guys know my face from the news, I've been on the news a lot. I'm doing a marathon in December 3rd. I just want to say thank you to everybody that has donated to St. Jude. It means a lot to me and it means a lot to the community, too. So, I just want to say thank you for everything.
The Patel family, Jay and Rashawn, they're actually owners of Sea Mark Gas Station on 82 here in Northport. And if you remember, folks, a few months back, that Northport wanted to reactivate our Northport Fine Arts Initiative. And out of that, that initiative just reactivating, we had a lot of people supporting it. But the Patel families actually went above and beyond unsolicited. They came to city council and said, "Look, what can we do to help the children of Northport?" So what they have done is for every gallon of gas that was sold at the Sea Mark Gas Station, they donated one penny. So those pennies started to add up. And from February to June, I guess?
July.
July. They actually raised a little over three grand. So all 3100 bucks, I think? Thirty-one and some change is going to go and split among five elementary schools to help with music and fine arts. So you can pay for a little bit of music, a little bit of fine arts, and the resources and the teachers. So again, I know, Mayor, you probably knew coming on board, but these are these businesses I think that makes this fine arts initiative is what it is. It adds value to it. So again, we love to take money and, you know... Yes, absolutely. You want to say anything, Patel? Hey, hey, we appreciate you. And again, folks, if you need to buy some gas, and I'm not just doing a shameless plug, but again, he's going to give a penny for every gallon of gas. And then that money's going right back to, how many elementary school students we got? Raise your hand for elementary school. One, two, three, got a few of them in the back. If you do that, it actually helps our kids. So again, this is a win-win and I'm just so glad that they came unsolicited to this city to say, "What can we do to help our children?" So again, every elementary school will get that value of those 3100 dollars. So again, Rashawn, thank you guys so much. And again, Mayor, we will take money.
We will.
Yes.
And I think this is just another way that we have partnerships with the County Board of Education to help not only the students in our city, but it helps our city.
Absolutely. Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, in our pre-meeting, we had a rather lengthy one. Again, I'll make a motion to approve that agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would like to have an executive session to discuss the potential sale of city property and retail development at the end of the meeting. I would guess it takes about 30 minutes and it depends on how long you guys want to talk and lady, and then we'll come back, we'll take no action tonight.
All right, thank you.
And I would suggest, as we customarily do it, do it at the very end of the meeting. But there will be no action taken other than just adjourned after the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. What I do is I'll amend my motion to add item 12A, 12A2? 12A2 to the agenda for a proposed executive session to last no more than 30 minutes at the request of the legal department. Again, that's in the form of an amended motion. We had a second, of course, by Councilman Sullivan. Any further questions or comments or discussions? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item six, actually 6A, this gentleman needs no introduction, of course, but since he's in the audience, I will try my best. He hails from the North Pole. His address is number one North Pole, USA. State your name and address for the record.
Merry Christmas. My name is Santa Claus and I live at the North Pole. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. Congratulations to the Patel family, that was a great gesture and you definitely are on the nice list. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Para to thank the city of Northport for their support in our programs throughout the city and helping make the lives of the Northport citizens a better, a better life, a better place to work, and a better place to play. Through your support, Para this past year was able to win three awards through the Alabama Parks Association. One was being the Agency of the Year. The second one was having a Facility of the Year. And then the third one was having the indoor tennis facility of the year. So three distinguished awards that the employees of Para were able to win, and that's through the support from the city of Northport and the two other bodies that help support Para. The main reason I'm here tonight is to welcome each of you to the 41st Annual Christmas Parade, which will be held December the 5th in Tuscaloosa. We'll have a tree lighting ceremony in front of the courthouse at 5:15, and the parade will start at 6:30. And we will be looking for each of you to either be a spectator or a participant in that parade. So to help remind you that the parade is coming up, Santa has a little gift for you tonight. And congratulations to all the new faces I see this year. And just take this little gift and you can think about the upcoming Christmas parade. I know the reindeer were a little upset when we flew over today, they didn't see any green fields anywhere, a bunch of deer. They're grass. Stop over and go out and get some corn. Don't worry, budget.
Thank you.
Everybody else can like a candy cane before Santa leaves. Should have a little smiling face that's sitting over there. I know they would love one. Y'all been good this year? All right. I got my own. Anybody here? Merry Christmas and to all good night.
I just got word Santa's from the South Pole because he said, "Y'all." Did you get that? He ain't from the North Pole, he's not a northerner. Thank you, Charles, for clearing that up. I couldn't hear that. He did say, "Y'all." Alright, folks, we have Dr. Hayes Boyd, I saw him in the audience, I think. He's going to give us an update on the West Alabama Heritage Museum and the Sherwood Place Foundation. Dr. Boyd, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Swan, Mr. Davis, and others. My report is going to be very brief, but I thought it would be nice for you to have a copy of what I'm going to say. Y'all have already received, I think before this meeting, the official report from the West Alabama Heritage Learning Center, but I thought this would be helpful to you. I'll go through this very briefly. Item number one, every document, every historical document that came from Marvin Harper's collection is now housed in our museum at 911 Main Avenue. Now, that collection consists of 1,100 books in excess of 1,000 files, letters, genealogy records, and other historical documents. Now, in those files, a file may have just one or two items in it. It may have as many as 30 or 40. So you have an idea of the amount of information that we have there that was collected over a 40-year period. Now, every single item, every single sheet has been reviewed and it has been entered into our computer system, and you will be able to go and look and see exactly where every item is, on what shelf it's held in the library, and in what file drawer it is. So that was a five-year effort, but that is complete. Now, also, we have maps of some very interesting maps of early 1820s, 1830s. We have maps of Northport in 1900 showing what stores were on what piece of property in downtown. So it's just a wonderful collection of information there. We have scrapbooks, we have school reports, church records. The, on item four, we've had our open house, and I'm happy to say that many of y'all were there and you saw for yourself what we have, and that was a very successful event. Under item five, we will be opening to the public for research on the first Thursday in January, January the ninth, no, January the 6th. We'll be open from 10:00 in the morning until 4:00 PM on Thursdays as we progress, and if there's a need for additional days in the week, we will be open to meet whatever demand is there. I'm happy to say that we've already had three school groups tour the facility. They were given not only a tour, but two brief talks by members of our organization about history, local history here in town. In addition to what Marvin Harper had, we are adding other collections. Lackey Stevens' collection has been added, and there's something like 40,000 names that comes with his collection on genealogy records. Our website is www.westalabamaheritages.org. You can visit that, it's working, it's up now. Now, you will not see a whole lot on that website tonight. If you Google it here, you will find some things, but that's a work in progress and eventually, we will have all of this on our website. We are partnering with the Tuscaloosa County Preservation Society so that different organizations within the community know what the other organizations are doing, and that is very helpful for all of us. And in closing, I would just ask the support of the community, every time you have an opportunity to tell someone that we're down there, we would appreciate that. This is a new organization, so we need some publicity from word of mouth and that sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd, and everybody's hard work on that. Will that be open during Dickens, Doctor? Will that?
It will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could say, I believe Dr. Boyd is probably the hardest-working man in Northport. He almost, he and Lackey Stevens almost single-handedly have put this together. Of course, the board has helped, but Dr. Boyd is the driving force behind the organization, and he's to be applauded for the many, many hours that he's put in on that board and pulling this information together. I know that Marvin Harper would be very happy with what you've done, Doc. We appreciate it.
Item 8A1 under New Business is a first reading of an ordinance declaring the sales tax holiday or severe weather sales tax holiday. Mr. Davis, again, this is basically a first reading, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President.
I'll offer that for a first reading for item 8A1. Item two has been deleted, ladies and gentlemen. Item 83, 8A3 is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a conditional use approval for vehicle sales in a C3 zone at 1507 Bridge Avenue. Mr. Stevens, again, tell us a little bit about this one.
Yes, sir, this is a request for conditional use for wholesale vehicle sales on Bridge Avenue. Mr. Harton's in the crowd, it's Mr. Jimmy Harton's making this request. This was originally before the planning commission at their October meeting, and because of some of the council scheduling, it's been delayed till this meeting. He did request the consideration of suspending rules, adopting this tonight.
Mr. Harton's in the crowd. Mr. Harton, how you doing? Can you state your name and address, please?
Jimmy Harton, 3742 First Court, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
And I know, based on, I know, you know, we had a little thing called an election last couple of few months ago, so we kind of backed you up a little bit. And I know exactly what the property, what you're referring to. How many cars would you say? And this is basically wholesale. This isn't a car lot, it's basically...
Basically wholesale, just mostly, mainly my office there and the garage to get my cars ready to take to the auctions and resell them at the auction.
Would it be no more than, I know in the application, I think, six. I think six or seven was cited on the application.
Yeah, that's about it.
Okay. And I think Stevens, you were asking, I know the applicant's asking for a suspension of the rules based on some time-sensitive stuff that he needs to do, so I'll open the floor to see if someone wants to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can address not only the first reading, but the second reading regarding Mr. Harton's request.
Move to suspend.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, I'm sorry, making sure, Davis. Councilman Davis with the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Mr. President, I would remind the council that to suspend the rules, you have to have unanimous consideration.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President, rules are suspended.
Thank you, under suspension of the rules, again, is there a motion to approve the conditional use for vehicle sales in a C3 zone located at 1507 Bridge Avenue? Again, favorable recommendation from the planning and zoning.
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Harton, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a conditional use approval to operate a group home at 1603 19th Street. It's currently zoned RS-6, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this is a request from Ms. Joyce Gaines, I believe is in the audience. She received a favorable recommendation from the November meeting of the planning commission.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gaines, I've looked at, of that application as well, and I'll, no need, I'll make a motion for a first reading on that one. And then we'll come back in two weeks and council will formally approve the actual conditional use. So again, come back in about two weeks and should be okay. But I have read the application, I think, and talked to some of our neighbors in that area. I think everybody's pretty favorable with you as a business owner, and only thing I would say is continue to be a good neighbor. Uh-huh. Item five is a first reading of an ordinance annexing eight acres located at 4105 17th Street. Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, so this is an eight-acre parcel of land immediately adjacent to the west of the Quintown neighborhood, but accessed via 17th Street, just south of the railroad tracks. The reason for the request is water access. The city's already granted emergency water access, and this applicant has gone through the process. Planning commission has given a favorable recommendation to annex into the city.
All right. I'll make a motion for a, or excuse me, I'll offer that for a first reading on item five. 8B1 is a resolution, of course, declaring certain items and equipment as surplus and authorizing the proper disposal. Chief Marshal, these are items in your various firehouses that have reached their useful life, and we just basically need to put these into our surplus process and authorize the proper disposal, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution awarding bid file 16-08 for stone and riprap. Again, ladies and gentlemen, you'll see this throughout the night, our public works department has got some annual bids that they're going through, so we have to, by state code, go through each one individually. Again, this is for stone and riprap. The lowest bidder was Pierce Trucking, meeting the bid specifications. Again, is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambride. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item three is a resolution to executing the copier agreement with advanced business machines. Again, this is a new lease agreement. Ms. Starrens, real quick, we're going to do a lease and then we'll do a surplus of the old one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to execute the necessary agreements for the lease with advanced business machines for the new copy machine for public works in the amount of $6,6756.75.
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, again, is declaring the old or busted piece of a copy equipment as surplus. Again, this is a motion to approve that resolution declaring that item surplus and authorizing the proper disposal.
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item five is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing the proper disposal. Chief Foster, these are basically items out of our evidence room, and I can assure that, ladies and gentlemen, there is not a firearm in that evidence room, so these are basically items that have, just basically in the evidence room, need to be disposed of properly. Is there a motion to approve that resolution declaring these items surplus and authorizing the proper disposal through Chief Foster's office?
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six is a resolution authorizing renewal of a lease agreement for the Civitan Park property. Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. President, you have a memorandum in your packet. Basically, the Civitans have asked that you extend their lease for a period of 10 years. The lease is the same lease, basically, that they've had for the last probably 20 years. They have done an excellent job in helping maintain the park and make improvements to it, including a building, a paved walking trail, lighted, they've lit the walking trail and they've raised the flagpole. We're recommending that you approve the lease. Mr. Davis has included a section in the lease that allows either party to drop the lease after a 60-day notification.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Before I get it out, leasing the Northport Civitan Park to the Northport Civitan Club Incorporated, that's a motion by Councilman Hambride, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hambride?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item seven is a resolution awarding bid file 16-07 for drainage pipe. Ms. Starrens, I wanted to make sure that in the form of a motion, I'll go ahead and make it, ladies and gentlemen, ADS Pipe, the lowest responsible bidder was Ferguson, and the concrete pipe, lowest responsible bidder was Foley Products. Ladies and gentlemen, and Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution awarding... Uh, ladies and gentlemen, and mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the bid file for drainage pipe. Bid file one-six dash zero-seven to the bidder meeting these specifications and having the lowest unit price specified in the attached bid tabulations. And authorizing our city administrator to approve as needed any purchase requisitions. Drainage pipe using the unit prices from our said bid file. Again, ADS pipe goes to Ferguson, and concrete pipe will go to Foley Products. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item eight is a resolution awarding bid file one-six dash zero-nine for automotive batteries. Ms. Starnes, again, Interstate Battery of Tuscaloosa was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specifications. And again, is that in the form of a motion? Floor is open.
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item nine is a resolution awarding bid file one-six dash one-zero for heavy-duty automotive supplies. Again, this is out of Public Works. The lowest responsible bidder is Southland International. And again, I'll make this in the form of a motion to authorize our city administrator's office to approve as needed all purchase order requisitions for heavy-duty auto parts using the unit prices from the said bid file. Again, that was in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item ten is a resolution aw- awarding the bid file one-six dash one-one for light-duty automotive supplies. Again, out of Public Works, the lowest responsible bidder is Northport Auto Supply. I'll make that in form of a motion to award the lower bidder, which met all specifications, and authorizing our city administrator's office to approve as needed any necessary purchase requisitions for light-duty auto parts using the unit prices from the said bid file, of course. This is in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item eleven is a resolution awarding the bid file for miscellaneous auto- automotive supplies. Again, the lowest responsible bidder, Northport Auto Supply in this case, I'll make a motion to approve that. That lowest responsible bidder meeting specs and authorizing our city administrator's office to approve as needed all purchase requisitions for the miscellaneous automotive parts using the unit prices from the said bid file. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item twelve is a resolution awarding bid file one-six dash one-three for oil products. Again, out of Public Works, the lowest responsible bidder is W.H. Thomas Oil Company. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve that as the lowest responsible bidder, meeting these specifications, and authorizing our city administrator to approve as needed all purchase requisitions for oil products from the unit prices from the said bid file. Again, to W.H. Thomas Oil Company. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item thirteen is a resolution awarding the bid file for the wastewater treatment plant or finished water pumping station improvements. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Mayor members of council. Um, on November second, we took bids for the water treatment plant, finished water pumping, uh, project. Uh, this project was, is, is part of the process of us beginning to do the, the rehab project on the Charlie Shirley tank. Uh, the first step in this process was the pressure-reducing valve project we did early last year, and then towards the end of last year, we did some piping work actually on the tank site itself. And during this process, we identified, uh, some redundancy issues we had in the pumping system for having that tank out of service for three to six months while we did the project. So this project takes care of those redundancy issues that we will have long-term operating the system. It should be the last step in, in moving forward with, with that next project. Uh, we received five proposals on this, this project, and those bids ranged from two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand to three-hundred-and-thirty-four-five. Um, the, the low bid was two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand to J&amp;P Construction Company. Uh, as a point of reference as well, the, the engineer's estimate was four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, roughly a, a savings of about one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, which with all of the bids being so close together, the two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand is not an outlier, so it is in line with the remaining bids. And at this time, we're asking for approval of the bid of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand to J&amp;P Construction.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid for the water treatment plant, finished water pumping station in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars to the city administrator. And execute any necessary documents as needed to proceed with the project. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing the Friends of Historic Newport to open Shirley Place for Dickens Downtown. Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. President, as we discussed in the pre-meeting, uh, Friends has graciously, uh, uh, agreed to open Shirley Place for the city this year during the Dickens Downtown celebration. Uh, Mr. Chuck Gerdau with Friends of Historic Newport is here. If you have any specific questions for him. Uh, but this resolution would authorize Friends to open Shirley Place for tours and allow them to decorate the grounds for Christmas. I understand that the Christmas tree is already up and has not, uh, Ms. Starnes hadn't put the lights on. I think she's gonna do that tonight after council meeting. Uh, but, uh, they will, uh, open Shirley Place and give tours of the, uh, the upstairs or the top floor. Uh, the bottom floor will remain closed and, but hopefully due to repairs, but hopefully will be open next, uh. Recommended that you approve.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the Friends of Historic Newport to open Shirley Place for tours of the top floor during Dickens Downtown?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item fifteen is a resolution authorizing the change order number two for the Mid Layer Road Improvement Project. Mr. Webb.
Yes, Mayor, Council, um, as y'all are aware, the Mid Layer Road Project is finally coming to a, to completion. We, um, still have one payment left. It'll be, um, just the retaining for holding the contractor. Um, this change order before you tonight is a final quantity adjustment. It, um, simply you have overruns and underruns throughout the project, but, uh, fortunately on this one, we end up with a deduction of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution or authorizing the approval of change order number two for the Mid Layer Road Improvement Project, which will result in a total price reduction of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second? I'll make that as more, in the form of a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item sixteen is a resolution requesting the reimbursement of money spent by the city of Newport for the Mid Layer Road Improvement Project. Mr. Davis.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, this would allow Mayor Aaron to present a request to the road commission at their next meeting, which is next Monday. Uh, they will get some other requests and probably be voted on in, at the December meeting of the road commission. This authorizes the mayor to, um, make this record, request in a formal manner with the commission, and the amounts are on exhibit A to the, uh, motion. Uh, basically, we'll be asking the, um, road commission to reimburse the city approximately seven-point-seven million dollars.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution, uh, uh, excuse me, authorizing the mayor to seek reimbursement of the Mid Layer Road Improvement expenditures from the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have twelve items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees. Uh, P.O. requisitions, of course, regarding our water or wastewater utilities division, and we have two items that have been deleted, item four and item ten. Again, I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, item nine reports of special committees to council. We have none to report, although, Mr. Davis, if it pleases mayor and council, I think you, you mentioned in our pre-meeting that we discussed, uh, committee responsibilities and who, who will do what. Uh, is that still requirement that we need to make this in the form of a motion, or is that?
Yes, sir. I think I would make a motion and, and put in the minutes the different committees and who, uh, which council members would chair and be co-chair. Obviously, the mayor would be on each of the committees. And then the, the city administrator and the various, uh, applicable department heads. And I think this is also discussed at the meeting, that each, uh, committee chair would, would set the meeting, that each committee would set their own meeting time. And the press would be notified either that a committee would meet on a regularly scheduled, um, like a monthly meeting, or that would meet as needed and, and of course, give notice, uh, to the media about those meetings as well.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, in the form of a motion, ladies and gentlemen, I, I would make in the form of a motion that the finance committee will be chaired by Councilman Sullivan, co-chair Councilman Logan. The projects committee, Councilman Davis, co-chaired by Councilman Hogg. The administration or the personnel committee be chaired by Councilman Hambright, co-chaired by Councilman Davis. The business development or retail development, which deals with property and retail recruitment, be chaired by Councilman Hogg, co-chair Councilman Logan. And the public safety, unless some, somebody has a, uh, little bit of heartburn, uh, Councilman Hambright and Councilman Sullivan. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You to be congratulated on being able to read my handwriting.
Well, I, to be an engineer and, yeah, I'm telling you. Item ten is public hearings. We have none to report tonight. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, as we discussed in our pre-meeting, uh, your council meeting of December fifth falls on the night of the Christmas parade. Uh, it is standard practice for the council to, uh, reschedule that meeting. We are recommending that you have one meeting in December and only one, and that be on December twelfth.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the, moving the December fifth meeting to December twelfth. Uh, times will still apply, five o'clock pre-meeting, six o'clock general public meeting or general meeting. Again, that's in the form of a motion, December twelfth, moving it from December fifth to December twelfth. Is there a second?
Mr. President, are you going to, uh, have the meeting on the eighteenth, or are you going to omit that one? I just, so we have clarification for, for everyone. Are we just gonna have one meeting in December?
We will have one meeting in December, so we will omit the eighteenth, 'cause I think Santa just said we gotta make sure everybody's only up and up. So we, we will omit December eighteenth. And we will move from December fifth to December twelfth, if, if that pleases mayor and council. Uh, that was in the form of a motion. Uh, time still apply, five o'clock pre-meeting, six o'clock, uh, general meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item twelve, departmental business out of our planning. Um, Mr. Stevens, you have a couple, couple items to, to address regarding our zoning board of adjustments.
Uh, yes, sir, with Councilman Hogg's election to the seat of council, his seat was vacated on the board of adjustments, so that's a vacancy. Uh, the board of adjustment has five regular members and two supernumerary members, so, uh, it's the planning department's request that the council consider appointing, uh, members to fill the vacancies.
Alright, thank you. Again, we'll, we'll, I know in our pre-meeting, Scott, we discussed, um, a few names and, and right now, we'll first go through reappointing, or excuse me, appointing someone to fill Councilman Hogg's term through twenty-eighteen. So again, uh, is there a motion to appoint a name to fill the remainder of Councilman Hogg's term on the zoning board of adjustments through twenty-eighteen? This is, this is a, a person to fill the, the term through twenty-eighteen.
Move to appoint Jason Ward to fill the remainder of my term on the zoning board of adjustments.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
And I think, Mr. Stevens, we do have Mr. John Gardner and Ms. Susan Rue, who has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the ZBA.
Yes, sir. Their regular terms expire at the end of December, end of this year, uh, and they've both expressed, uh, interest in continuing, and they have served, uh, as good members in the past.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution reappointing Mr. John Gardner to the zoning board of adjustments. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Again, keeping in step, I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Susan Rue to the zoning board of adjustments. Again, these are, uh, another citizen who previously served and wished to keep, continue serving. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Susan Rue to the zoning board of adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Alright, Scott, by doing that, a little domino effect, the two super positions, I, I won't, just, we have two super positions now that are open, and it was discussed in our pre-meeting, uh, one, uh, Pastor Byron Fair, if you're willing to serve. Uh, and I think, Mr. Mayor Madison, if she's willing to serve, two of our super positions, so I'll make a motion to, or I, I'll, I'll move to adopt the resolution appointing, uh, Byron Fair as a super member of the zoning board of adjustments. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.